Today is Wednesday, November 6, 2013. The time is 10:00 a.m. The meeting of the Monmouth County Commissioner is called to order. Everyone please rise for a moment's silent meditation and pledge to be quiet. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Diane.
We're consent and approval today. There are 17 exonerations, $9,840.25 for tax years 2012, 2013. Fiduciary orders as of November 6, and that includes an estate matter, which we do have someone present to object to that estate. There are no minutes. We have purchase orders and pay vouchers. General County Fund, $103,022.42. Cole Severance Fund, $448.65. 911 Cash, $17,020.161. Camp Monthly, $3,067.54. Mason Dixon Park, $2,055.26. Chestnut Ridge Park, $3,071.90. Home Confinement, $11,306.46. For a total of $140,971.84. And there are no bonds and no budget revisions.
Move for approval.
Second with a question. When we approve this, we don't...
No, we... She didn't include this one.
Gotcha.
But we'll deal with this separate.
Thank you. Okay, no problem. That's what my question was. Second.
Have a motion in the second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed. Okay, we've got a... It's what Commissioner Bloom was just referring to. We have an estate of Arthur P. Scottschul, Third Accounting, on which an objection was filed by Mr. Scottschul, Louis Scottschul. Is anyone else present here on this estate? Mr. Pappas or anyone else? I was reading over... Mr. Scottschul, you can come forward and identify yourself for the record and where your address is.
Louis A. Scottschul, Sr., 1444 Saratoga Avenue, Morgantown, West Virginia.
I was reading over your objection, but in a nutshell, can you just sort of explain what the problem is here?
Well, if you go by the Monmouth County Probate booklet, nothing's been done properly since the beginning. And the more you file, the more they seem to ignore the issues that are supposed to be filed before they do anything. And right now, this estate's a good chance of being ruined because too many properties have been sold that haven't been appraised properly. And it's put a damper on the estate because there's no revenue to support the bills that are due against the estate in such fact that my uncle, the way I understand it from the attorneys, and I've been led to believe is either separate as Westover Realty from APS' estate, which is Arthur P. Scottschul, and then at other times, it is together as one. So they've never clarified in any manner, any of the rules and the codes that I read in the probate booklet, in their procedures of how to file proper accounting or to show proper appraisements. And that's why I put that in some detail as to why I'm objecting to this account again, as I objected in the first accounting, but was passed up on the second accounting because I'm not getting any descriptions or anything that's coming or going from Mr. Pappas or anybody else on how they're proceeding without, you know, in some kind of a format. So due process to me has been very well eroded throughout this whole estate, which is now going on five years old.
You're one of the heirs and was an executor?
Well, I was an executor. I'm an heir, and I'm also a claimant. And I'm also filed a will contest against the estate, which is still in the courts and never been determined. And things are moving right along as if they've already decided whose will they're going to deal with. So it's very complicated.
There's a pending will contest in the Circuit Court?
Yes, sir.
And they're selling property?
Selling property. I hold a deed of trust to a piece of property in this, and I've never been paid or satisfied. And yet, it's been sold. And it's just getting to be so chaotic that something's got to be done. And that's why I filed this in such detail, to try to give you some idea of what's going on. And I've also forwarded a copy of this to my attorney, Matt Yanni, who's representing me in the will contest.
How... I was reading your explanation, but how did Keith Pappas get in this?
Because my cousin, John Scottschul, Jr., had a newer will, which that's the will contest, and became the executor on April 22, I believe, of 2009. And from the time he was the executor, he never paid any of the bills. And they depended on me to use my financial abilities to make sure all loans were paid to date and so forth and so on.
And that's what created your claims?
My claims and everything else. Plus, whenever my uncle turned over the estate to me, November of 2004, and give me his will and MPOA and GPOA, I run all his businesses for a year at my expense and never was paid a dime. And I also filed a claim on that, which doesn't seem to come up or the proper accounting never shown.
The fiduciary commissioner didn't have a hearing on your claim or...
I haven't... Nobody's heard from nobody, from what I understand. And they're bleeding it dry as an attorney instead of as an administrator.
My question is being that this is the first time that I've ever run across this with such a unique situation. You know, I feel like the way, just by your questions, I'm concerned about moving forward until we get some real clarification. Because I think it's more confusing after reading some of your statements than also finding out about the fiduciary segment there isn't. I'm really confused how we can move forward until we have a better understanding of what's going on. But again, I don't know the process, so I throw that to you two.
I really think we need to have a hearing on this with all parties present.
I think so, too.
I think we need to have you here, or we need to have Mr. Pappas here, we need to have Mr. Armstead here. And we need to get this thing aired out. This is absolutely absurd and ridiculous that it would take this long for a state to get resolved.
That's mad.
And particularly being hung up with attorneys.
Exactly.
It doesn't take four years or five years to make a decision on issues.
Or a will contest.
Well, I don't understand how anyone could be selling property while there's a will contest. How anyone could buy property? I don't understand that. Now, has the fiduciary commissioner taken any evidence on any of these?
Every time you tried it, every time I've tried, to the best of my knowledge, I have to come up with money before he'll ever hear it. And if I don't come up with money to pay for a hearing or something like that, then you can't be heard. So... And that's where we're at now. But I was told that if we wanted to have Mr. Pappas removed, which I tried to do in July of 2011, I believe, I have to come up with more money before there'll be a hearing set. So it's me being drained...
More money gone to who?
I have to pay the fiduciary commissioner so much money before he'll have a hearing. And this has been bleeding me dry for the past five years. And I'm not seeing none of my money.
I agree with Commissioner Bartolo. I think we need to handle it right here. We need to find out what's going on in the Circuit Court on the will contest as well.
So will I be able to get notified when this will take place?
Yeah. I think we need to have everyone present. Fiduciary commissioner, all the parties. Find out what's going on.
Right.
Thank you.
Could I have a motion of that effect? Yeah, I would move that we arrange also some representative from the county clerk's office that's dealt with the fiduciary matter. I think we need to have a laundry cleaning session and get this thing aired out in the right direction for a decision to get it resolved.
I second it.
Have a motion in the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion pass.
Is that during a regular session?
We'll have to... Yeah, it will have to be during a regular session. We'll have to schedule it at a time that everyone can be available.
Will the notices go from here or...
Carrie, would the clerks send the notices of that or would we send those notices?
If you make a motion and issue an order to have a hearing, then we'll send the notices out pursuant to your order.
Okay. I think that's what the motion just was.
Right.
Does it need to be more formal or a date set with it or something, Carrie?
You'll need to identify a date for us before we can send the notices out as to when you want them to appear and what time, so... Check that down right after, or you're...
We can do it next week.
Yeah. Just for clarification, if when you send out the notice, could we also have each side give a little bit of a synopsis? So, I mean, it would help us greatly. Because again, we have one side. I'd like to have what the other party's...
Oh, you mean in written format?
Yeah, written format.
Well, we can request it, but I...
You do receive a fiduciary status report every quarter for the law, where the fiduciary commissioner details for you the status of that particular estate.
Okay. Thank you.
I think we need to determine that everyone's available.
Right.
And want to set something, and then we have to change it and change it because someone's out of town or something like that. Okay, Renata. Oh, a bunch of them.
We have some requests for reimbursement for the Governor's Community Participation Grant Program for Arnsville Community Center. There's also a certificate of completion because they've expended all of their grant funds. Let's see here. There's an additional one for Arnsville Community Center for $1,500. And Mountaineer Boys and Girls Club for $6,000... I'm sorry. $1,908.81.
Just a question on that. Where that... Is that just a community block grant that they get? I was just wondering where they... Okay. Just wondering where they're getting the money.
We also have some requests for reimbursement for the West Virginia Bureau of Senior Services And this is the JABG grant for MEYSP for the month of September, $404.40.
Is that all those?
No, I'll let you catch up.
Oh, okay. Starting to feel like Henry Blake.
Sure. This is another...
Some people might know who Henry Blake is.
This is another grant for the JABG grant program. MEYSP has several grant... They have several grant awards through that program, and they've expended. That was the rest of the 2009. This is 2010. Trying to give them as much funds as we can.
How much is that?
Oh, I'm sorry. And this is the Emergency Solutions Grant for September of 2013. And then we have grant application for the West Virginia Geological and Economic Survey.
Want to leave a commission on this? Want a motion on the reimbursements first?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Move for approval.
Second.
Have a motion in the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion pass.
This is the West Virginia Geological and Economic Survey Grant for the Broadband Technical Assistance Grant Program. We're applying for $30,000 for Monmouth County Emergency Management. And it is to deploy and customize a resource management module that will allow all the participating agencies to view and manage their respective inventory and resources electronically in real time. And I know Mike's here, so he can elaborate on it if you like. It's a $30,000 grant, 7.5% cashment or just a match requirement, so $2,250 will be required from...
That's not bad.
Yeah.
Move for approval. Mike, is there anything you want to mention on this broadband grant?
No, sir. It's just going to benefit all the law enforcement agencies in our agency.
Move for approval.
Second.
Have a motion in the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Renata. I made it through. My hand is still on there. It's all right. That's nice, Joe.
Yeah, that's real nice.
Very good. Okay. Mike, you're up. Did you still enjoy those ribs from last night?
They lasted a long time.
Ah, they're good.
With me, I have three new employees that we hired effective this Monday. Mr. Campbell, Mrs. LaRue, and Ms. Boeble. Ms. Boeble and Ms. LaRue have dispatcher experience, and Mr. Campbell is new to the 911 side but has an extreme interest in emergency services. We're pretty confident that they will be a great addition to our agency, and we look for your approval for final appointment.
They're full-time employees?
Correct, full-time employment, one-year probation.
Move for approval.
Second.
Have a motion in the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion pass. Welcome aboard. Glad to have you.
Hopefully, you won't be too busy.
I also understand that the assessor, Mr. Music, had a couple people. We moved you up front so you didn't have to wait in anticipation.
Too busy. Kabitzen.
That's okay.
Kabitzen. I haven't heard that word.
As we discussed, we've been talking about, we've been holding our interviews and stuff like that to bring on our own appraisers. And as of Tuesday, I was informed by the PBC Committee that they had no objections for the employment of the two appraisers that I had to present to them, being underneath that fund. So today, I wanted to bring them in to present to the commission and to everyone that's here, our two new appraisers. And first is Ms. Kristen Liller, and I think the commission may recognize Chris. She comes to us from the State Tax Department. She's also our county monitor for Monmouth County, and she also represents state minerals for the Board of Equalization.
Right. She's been with us a few times.
Yes. So she comes to us...
How did you manage to steal her, or what?
Well, that's...
Okay, that's a story you don't want published. Okay.
But we're excited.
Yeah, I would be, too.
We have Chris. She comes in with 10 years' experience from the Property Tax Division. She brings a master's degree from the BM Safety to us. Her experiences include appraisal services of residential, commercial, and industrial properties, and also as a senior appraiser of the State Tax Department. She was assigned as our monitor for Monmouth County. So this past spring, Chris was with us to give us our grade. She's very familiar with Monmouth County, very familiar with the office and the situation in which we're going, and very excited about moving forward with us to get us back to...
She's very familiar with two of the commissioners, too.
Yes, she is.
Because two years in a row, you're up here.
Yeah, so it's a big help. So it's a familiar face. So we're excited.
Yeah, I am, too. That's good.
Very happy to be here.
Our next individual is... We have female Chris, male Chris.
Yeah.
K and C.
So we can go along and go, Chris, but this is James Chris Michael. Chris also comes to us from the West Virginia State Tax Department, has over 20 years of working in the state and county government. Currently, Jim is working as a senior appraiser for the State Tax Department, monitoring county assessor's compliance with the PBC Board. So that's very important to us because he knows what the PBC Committee is looking for and knows what we need to be to be in compliance to get us there. And the other side of that is, though, he was an appraiser for Tucker County, and so he has experience with the Board of Review and Equalization hearings. And he's also one of you.
That's scary.
So he's also a county commissioner.
That's scary.
So I've kind of worked out and got...
Strange mix.
Got experience from monitoring side on both ends, from the State Tax Division and also from the county commission. So that helps us as a whole, and we're building and moving forward. So both were... We called yesterday the offer. We were excited that they both said yes. So, and they took time today to come in here to be in front of you all, so I have to present them. And we'll start moving forward.
I'll tell you, it's hard not to react to these two appointments. I think this raises the bar, sets a new standard in Monmouth County, particularly, I know it has to set a new standard in the assessor's office. And I think we're fortunate, the assessor's office fortunate, to get both of these individuals. And as a county, we're fortunate to have both of you with us.
Well, I agree. I mean, I think you're going to see a lot of different things. We've had discussions on what we want to do. We have some ideas that we've been working on and discussing, so it's going to be a little different. And I think the both bring... The one thing I really enjoy outside of their experience is their personalities. You know, they're willing to work and sit down and listen, so that meets what I want.
That means they won't argue with the Board of Review.
Well, we don't want to go that way. We won't go that way. You know, Jim's been on both sides, so he knows those arguments. But we're very excited, and we're looking forward. Chris will begin December 9, and Chris will begin December 16. So they will be meeting with Tyler in the meantime, reviewing stuff and getting prepared because they'll be the ones sitting through anything that's going on in February through the Board of Equalization.
I think it also adds a lot of credibility to your department and to Monmouth County. And I think that's a real plus when people say, well, even though nothing against Tyler, but they were considered an outside agency where you've been doing it, you've been working for the State Department. And I think we're real excited to have you and hope to see more of you.
Yeah, and I was excited that the state said yes, let them go.
So quickly, yeah.
So, but that they understand in the direction in which we're going, too.
Great.
So, but...
I need a motion.
Okay. Move that we employ Kristen, Chris Liller, and James Chris Michael.
Second.
Have a motion in the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion pass. Welcome aboard K. Welcome aboard C. K and C.
Chris and Ms. Chris. And once we get settled, I hope you guys stop by and see us.
Certainly will. Thank you very much. And don't be a stranger. Come over and see us.
Okay.
K can tell you that we always had fun in our Board of Review and Equalization, even though they went days upon end.
You want to hear the record yourself?
Yeah, they talk about it all over the state.
Fortunately, I wasn't here then.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, welcome.
Okay. Richard Wood.
Mike Wolf still has...
Oh, Mike Wolf? Oh, I forgot. I passed over the end.
We have reviewed over the bid proposals for the Mobile Command Post that we put out the bid. We had two of those to review, and it is our recommendation that we accept the bid of NOBAD, NHO, MAD Global Communication Solutions for their bid of $255,000. And that was the lowest bid that came in.
Mike, can you clarify for us how the cost is going to be accomplished?
The... Go ahead.
Now, I understand there's a grant that's going to pay for some of it.
Correct.
But just for the record, we need to know.
We received a grant from the U.S. Department of Homeland Security Port Authority Grant out of Pittsburgh that will cover $200,000... And then we've also been working with Ron Snyder in the town of Granville, where we've secured a little over $40,000 more, which will cover the full cost of this. And we also will have some in-kind of equipment that we already have that will be able to outfit the unit. So there will be no cost, per se, that we'll be coming back for this at this time for that.
How long after approval, how long would it take to get this unit?
Between 160 and 180 days.
And how long will it take to put the accessories on it?
Within a week. So hopefully, by at least...
Somewhere.
...mountain vest will be fully operational with it.
So the accessories will be addition, or is that included in the bid?
There is some accessories that are already included. There are a couple additional options that are on here, safety features that we felt were important and it fits within the money that we have left for.
Very good. I would move that we accept his recommendation. Second.
Have a motion in the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion pass. Diane will be calling you about some things on that. We'll have to figure out, you know, what all you need. We want to make sure that it's just the way you all want it.
Sure.
All right. Richard Wood.
He's postponing today. He's getting both proposal people together, and they're trying to come up with one. So probably...
Okay. That's strict. Have any correspondence?
Yeah, we... Well, no. We have no correspondence. Unfinished business, yes.
Unfinished business.
Okay, I do have a letter from Phil Megrow, and this is addressing the contract that was before you last week for the identification of the possible graves in the Thorntons Cemetery in the city of Westover. And he is saying that it's correct that the cost of such investigation is the responsibility of the sheriff, and this cost will probably not be reimbursable by any other source.
Yeah, I understand what he said. Basically, he's saying when it comes to graves, the statute put it on the sheriff in the county to pay for it, whether it's inside or outside of municipality. That's what you understand it to, Sheriff?
It is in this particular case. You may or may not know, the state police got this original call once they... They had no knowledge of what the code was on this kind of call. And once they researched it, they found out that it was our responsibility to investigate those kind of things. So that's when we took it over and Detective Demetich has been handling that case since... One of the things, if I could add at this point, or mention at this point, what I did after the meeting last, when we came and asked the commission to allocate funds to have CRA come in and do the probes and things that they needed to do, was I looked at our own budget to see if I could move some money around to our investigative fund to do this instead of asking you all right now for that money. What I found was, we're going to be able to do that. So what I've decided to do instead, I'll cancel the request for the commission to allocate those funds. I'll go ahead and take it out of our budget. The only thing I would ask is if at some point later down the line towards the end of the budget year, if we find that we need a little allocation for the line item that I'll be taking this money out of, that you would consider that at that time.
Certainly. We appreciate the extra effort to save as much money for the taxpayers as you can. We really appreciate that.
And just to clarify something, this is a last resort for us with CRA because Detective Demetich has done everything he could do, paper-wise, research-wise, investigative-wise, to find out everything he could find out about this graveyard, grave sites, whatever you want to classify it as. And that can only go so far. So we have to have this company to come in because one thing, as most of you know, when you're doing an investigation, you have to come to some conclusion. And it's either, yes, somebody did something, no, they didn't, yes, there is something there, no, there isn't. The only way that we can find that out is by having these tests done.
And a pick and shovel is not an option.
Not an option.
I'd just like to mention that we have the property owner scheduled in the work session. And if it's possible for you to be present during that time, Sheriff, I think we could maybe... maybe listen to his information so that we don't get conflicting information.
Sure.
So you can clarify the issues for us.
He's scheduled to be here at 1:45.
Well, I know there's some questions that Mr. Panico has, and the bottom line is, for me, for Detective Demetich, and I think should be on everybody's mind is, if this is a grave site, imagine if it was one of your family members that may have been buried there back in the late 1700s, 1800s, would you want them disturbed? Or would you want somebody to find out that, yes, there are graves there, other than the two that we know about? I certainly would think if it was my family members, or the possibility of my family members being there, I would want to know. And as the property owner, trying to develop a piece of property, again, I would want to know if I'm doing everything right, or if there's something there that will pervade me from doing construction on that particular piece of property. This testing will tell us definitively the answer to those questions.
And I think too, for the record, correct me if I'm wrong, is that this is an investigation.
Absolutely.
And actually, any party that would interfere with that could actually be charged.
Absolutely.
I think it's, you weren't here when we talked about it last week, it still dumbfounds me how a grave that has people in the 1700s, 1831 grave site could not be of historical significance. I just, I just dumbfounded me. How could that possibly be? I mean, we have, we may think, by watching TV, Daniel Boone, we may think we know how they lived in 1831, but do we really? We don't. And I just, it just dumbfounds me that what's an historical group and the coroner's office said, nah, it's not significant. It's significant to me, and as you said, it's significant to our county, I believe.
Well, you're absolutely right. With the coroner's office, their reasoning was, we don't know how those people died. If we knew that they died of illegal means, somebody killed them or something, and that was part of the investigation, they would help. Well, there's no way, unless you find out if there's bodies there. And then the Historical Society and Cultural History Center said, well, we don't know if there's any historical significance of anybody that's buried there. You don't know who's buried there. That's why we're asking for your help. Anyway, it doesn't make any sense to me.
This might be speculation, but let's say that we know there's two, at least two bodies buried there.
Yes.
If there's more, or not, what would be the disposition of the two and possibly more bodies that are there? Do we have that answer yet, or?
We really don't. My understanding is that this was a family graveyard, so we know that there's two bodies there, that's documented, that, those are in court records, or not court records, but in county clerk's office records, and we don't know about the other ones. And if there are other bodies there, they have to remain. That's their burial place, unless somebody gets a court order that says we can move them somewhere else to develop that property, then they remain where they're at.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you.
We don't need to do anything further on that.
No.
Okay. Unfinished business, appointments to boards, which ones we have today?
Okay, today we have the Deputy Sheriff's Civil Service Commission, it's a four-year term. Frank Vitale was serving in that position, his term expired, but he has interviewed and applied again, so I'm recommending he be appointed to a term that will expire September 1st, 2017. Board of Zoning Appeals, Colton Flew is interested, he, this would be to fill the unexpired term of Bill Wanderland. That term would expire June 1st, 2016. River Road Public Service District, Denzel Slaughter, unexpired term to expire April 30, 2014, and that's following the position of Ms. Morgan. And the Clay Batel Public Service District, David Segal, term to expire October 31st, 2019.
Move for approval of the appointments.
Second.
A motion, second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion pass.
We probably should note that we interviewed all of these candidates previously to make in this decision, we just couldn't make a decision until our formal meeting.
Any more unfinished business or new business?
That's all the appointments we have? Don't we have some to the Development Authority?
You did all those last week. The only thing we have now pending is the Mason Dixon.
And Camp Muffin.
Just Camp Muffin, and there's one for Mason Dixon.
Okay.
We're catching up on our appointments, fantastic. Even though we are still scheduled at 4:30 today, you're trying to catch us up all at once. You've been lagging behind, so now you're pushing us.
Pushing.
That's okay. Reports from County Commissioners. Commissioner Bartolo.
Well, as you know, we attended the meeting of the Mon County Medical Society last night. That was a new experience, discussed the ambulance service. Mike was there. We were willing to go back again if they served ribs, probably some of the best ribs that I've eaten. And we told them that, too, that we'd come back when they had ribs. But I was impressed with the presentation by the, I think it's Mon EMS's director who heads it up. He really provided information to us that we really hadn't heard a lot about. In fact, I invited him to come and talk to us when we have a meeting, once we get it arranged with the service providers, because I think he has some insight and some information that we can only get from him. But it was informative and it was interesting.
I think we're well received.
I think so, too. There was also some House of Delegate people there as well, so.
They didn't want to talk to them much, eh? They just wanted to talk to them about Suda Federal, and they didn't want to talk to us. Thanks, Commissioner Bartolo. Commissioner Brown?
Yeah, I'll give this to you, make sure you have. Exactly one year ago, November 6, 2012, I was elected to the County Commission. Since that time, I believe that the three of us have accomplished goals that the federal government has been unable to do. One, we've set a positive working relationship that has benefited the constituents in this county. Though we may not always agree, I've been honored to work with Mr. Bartolo, Mr. Callen, to make the difficult decisions that makes Montague County an exceptional place to own a business and to raise a family. Two, we've been able to provide access to the meetings through the internet and TV. This allows all the citizens to watch and monitor our meetings. Third, I've learned that our county is fortunate to have county employees along with an administrative staff that goes above and beyond their regular duties to provide exceptional service to our constituents. Four, we have instituted joint meetings of municipalities, along with WVU Administration and WVU Student Government officials, to discuss similar concerns and solutions to our problems. We also plan to go to Charleston to lobby for our constituents as one entity for our needs. But most of all, the three of us has sent a message to the state of West Virginia and to our community that Montague County has become more efficient with our funds, more accountable to the people, and we will continue to monitor very closely how all the money is spent, especially educational levy funds. Montague County is moving forward, and I'm thankful to be a part of it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tom.
And I'm not ready for office either.
Very nice. Hey, you got a while to go.
Yes. No, I am extremely honored. I really did not realize what this position had and what type of people we do have working for us, and I think the three of us, and I said, we may not always agree, but I believe we can do something that I wish the federal government would follow. Thank you.
I appreciate that. I was at the roundtable before I ran back to go to the doctor's meeting last night, and Bill covered that real well. The Regional Roundtable for County Commissioners Association. We shared a lot of things, and one of the significant things, and Senator Beach, he attended as well, Senator Bob Beach. We, all the legislators were invited, but he was the only one that could make it. We covered a lot of things, and one of the, one of the big things that we talked about in the County Commissioners Association is sort of getting on board of this, because I've been talking about it for some time now, and that is that there's such a distinct difference between the counties. You only got three counties, just over 100,000, you know? Twenty thousand, over half the counties are less than 20,000 of the 55. Over 36 of the counties are less than 50,000, you know? And those numbers, I'm not sure if those numbers are exactly right, I haven't worked out, but that's approximate. Other than Cabo County, which is around 95, 51 of the counties have 75,000 population in lots. Well, you can't set in Charleston and design something that's going to work in Work County or Lincoln County, and also work in Montague County or Berkeley County. It just, it holds things back. One of the, one of the big things that we talked about, and we talked about this issue in our last, what I'm calling, Government Council meeting, the regional jail problem. Well, there's, here's a, here's a prime example of what I'm talking about. We were informed by Vivian Parsons, the Director of County Commissioners Association, that the head of the regional jails is, has a plan to move 400 to 1,000 prisoners out of state now. I mean, they're just taking bids, and they're going to move them out of state. Well, what the effect that is, that we talked about for quite a while, is that the cost for running the regional jails, and even though there's a lot of DOC people in regional jails because the DOC prisons are jam-full, the cost of running the regional jail is already there, which means that, according to Vivian Parsons, that the day rate on a prisoner in a regional jail could go up $6 a person, increased $6 a person. And Montague County, as I told them, we're doing well, we got money, and I'm not going to apologize for that. We do have an obligation to look out and help the other counties. I find that this is, if they really do this, they will wipe out some of these smaller counties. They can't pay their regional jail bill now, they're behind. It will literally financially wipe them out. I don't know where these ideas come from. But I was disturbed about that, and of course, this is second and third hand, and I would wish that people would dig in it more, and if they're really planning on dumping on the counties like that, that someone's really gone the wrong route of our whole jail system. As Commissioner Bartolo has talked many times, there is so many things wrong with the way we handle this situation, and I won't even get into it here, as to, for how many people we put away, why we put them away, all those reasons. But what I wanted to emphasize, that in that meeting, Senator Beach, in the discussion, and he said that we all need to focus on one thing when it comes to dealing with the legislature, is that the counties don't have all the money. He says, that's what he hears in the legislature all the time, state doesn't have any money, the counties have all the money. The counties don't have that much money. So, and this is a prime example, something that the state officials can say, oh, this is a great idea, we're going to ship these people out, can literally wreak havoc on the citizens in the counties in this state. So that was one of the things, we discussed a lot of other things, but I wanted to, I wanted to bring that up, that I believe that as a prosperous county, we need to focus not only on our own success, but the success of all the other counties, especially the counties around us. And I hope, whether it be transportation, or regional jail problems, or whatever, just as we brought the municipalities and things together, I would like to see more interaction between the local counties, to see kind of joint services. I think that's the key to cutting and keeping taxes down. Whenever, there's a thing I used to say when I was in management and leadership, is that a single task given, an empire thee shall make. That's just the way it happens. You assign, and the sheriff can tell you about this, you assign someone a task, and say, hey, I want you to go out and I want you to accomplish that. Nine times out of 10, if you're not careful, they'll come back with staff, and they want this, and they want that, they create an empire out of a single task. So that was one of my management, management things I used to point out. So that's how we're going to keep taxes down, is us working together, not only in Montague County, but also reaching out to the other counties. Madam Clerk, Ms. Blaney, would you have anything for us?
No, sir.
Sheriff, you have anything else for us?
I do. As you know, the tax lien sale was Monday. It went very well, once we got the VPN connection hooked up right, and everything worked very well. It was a lot better holding it in our facility, there was a lot of room, people were able to sit down, it was run very well. I was there for quite a while in the morning, and the auctioneer did an excellent job, so we just want to congratulate her, and the tax office did such a good job. And it wasn't an easy task, but I think there were seven pages of property, seven or eight pages of property. Three, over 300 pieces of property. So it took a little while to do it, but they got through it very quickly and efficiently. The other thing is, Isaac Coe, one of our new deputies, just graduated from the State Police Academy on Friday last week, did very well, and we're glad to have him back. He'll be in a field training officer program now for the next seven weeks as part of his induction into the department. Once that's done, then those three F T, or field training officers that he'll be with over those seven weeks will then compile a report that Chief Palmer will look at, evaluate, and then we'll discuss, and see if he's ready to be released on his own to handle calls. And then at that point, he'll be shadowed by a supervisor in case he needs any help of any kind for a couple of weeks. So happy to report that. One of the things we're sad to report is, we have had two resignations by deputies. One of them is Sergeant Craig Rosello. Craig is getting married again. He is...
He asked to quit his job to get married?
I'm sorry, he got married.
Now she's making him quit.
She's making him move to Texas. So his wife accepted a position at DuPont Corporation, I believe, in Texas, and being that her salary is going to be so much greater than his was there, he decided it'd be in his best interest to move as well, so.
Maybe he can be a personal bodyguard for the new athletic director of the Division of Texas.
He'll be a housewife. Either that or a house husband. I don't know.
Well, we wish him the best of luck.
He, yeah, we hope he, we do, and we hope he, hope he does well. The other resignation was from Matthew Stimple, he's a deputy, and that was effective about a week or so ago, so we've lost those two. We are hot and heavy into background investigations now, we've done the physical agility testing that was held Saturday, November 2nd. There were some, very few that failed it, but most passed, so our detective unit has the... So our detective unit has the names now, and they're starting their background investigations on the top three names on the eligibility list. So we are hoping, and knock on wood, that we get something and those investigations get done soon, and we get something into work so we can fill those two positions that are in our favor. We also did, I know I've got a lot today, we also did promotional testing a few months ago. As of the, I'm sorry, November 1st, we promoted four sergeants. It was Randy Stockton, Kurt Thomas, Alan Ayersman, and Detective Demetich. I was kind of pausing there for a little bit. I knew I'd get a look.
Why didn't he mention him first?
He's 5% off your budget.
He got his badges first, so there you go. He was first in that aspect. Happy to announce those. We are also looking at promoting some of our sergeants currently to first sergeant as of the 1st of December. So we're still in that process, getting all that taken care of, and hopefully those promotions will take effect the 1st of December. We're moving forward, and then we take a step back, because we lose a couple of people that are very vital to the operations, but we're hopeful that whoever replaces them will be just as good, if not better.
If I can ask again, I apologize, because I know you've been really on this situation, have you heard anything more about the intersection at 11973, because we've had three more accidents there?
You know, I'm not sure if it's because, you were asking, Mr. Commissioner, what the Department of Highways, I have, I have talked to Fred Shopperty, who is the regional engineer. I've talked to Larry Weaver, who is the county supervisor. I've talked to Brenda Thornton, who is in between those two. And I have to tell you quite honestly, every time I talk to him, one says it's been passed to Fred. I talked to Fred, Fred says, yes, we're looking at it, we realize there's major work that needs to be done there. However, we don't have the money in our budget to do the major work that needs to be done.
Right.
My comment to him was, Fred, can we just get some upgraded road markings and signs?
Right.
On it. Let me look into that. And then two or three weeks goes by, I call Larry back, Larry, you heard anything? Well, yeah, Fred said he was going to do this. That's been the conversations over the last several months we've been talking about.
There's no relationship to any Board of Education members, is there?
You know, I'm wondering if there might be a cousin there somewhere, but.
Well, but actually, and I know we joke about it, but it is a dangerous intersection. I just do not understand why they refuse, this is 12 years, and, you know, we were all there.
Yeah, I.
I mean, I don't understand how hard it's, I mean, I'm willing to go out there and put the pipes in and paint lines if I have to. And, you know, it is a situation that I think, if you could get me the name, because I'd like to have him come in front of the county commission and answer why.
I talked.
I'm at that point now.
Every, and like I say, every time I've talked to them, they say, yep, we realize something needs to be done up there. The time that you and I talked about it one time here in the recent past, the crews were out, I saw them out putting the new road signs down, the turn signs and things on the roads again. I called Mr. Weaver again and said, Larry, I know the crews are out. Can you just have them go up there and do this up there? Well, it has to be approved by signage and signals. Well, that's okay. Call Clarksburg and ask if they can have that crew go up there and do what they're doing on these other roads. And why nothing has been done, I don't understand myself.
Well, I appreciate your effort, and if you could give me some names, because I will ask at a work session that we have those individuals come. I'm at that point now, that it has gotten to a safety situation. As I said, we just had several more accidents there. You know it's a bad, we all know it's a bad intersection, and we're not asking, we're not even asking for much money. We're just asking that it be improved with the signage, and it's purposely not being done, and I want to know why.
Tell me what to roundabout.
County supervisor's.
Roundabout.
The county supervisor's name is Larry Weaver, and the telephone number to his phone on his desk.
Okay.
Is 285-3207.
It will be called today.
You've called him a couple of times, huh?
I've called him.
I'm going to call him some things too. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Ron, you have anything for us?
No, sir, I don't.
Sandy?
Yes, sir.
Do you have anything? Do we have any other elected officials? Diane, do you have anything further? Bobby? Renetta? Jamie?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Comments from the public? Have any comments from the public today?
Wow.
Gone once, gone twice. Have a motion?
I would move that we adjourn. Second.
I have a motion and a second all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. We're adjourned. Thank you.